Please rise to the room with prayers and blessings.
Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we gather together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
These proceedings are being recorded for the sole purpose of preparing accurate written minutes. Recordings are overwritten following approval of the minutes, eliminating all unofficial records of these proceedings. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Honor?
I'll have to stay since I wasn't here for the last one.
Mr. Lucas Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes. Are there any guests concerned in county business at this time? Bring them, we'll move on.
Next item is the report of executive sessions, Phil.
There was an executive session held on Thursday, May eleventh, at one thirty P. M. per personnel. Friday, May twelfth, at one forty-five P. M. personnel. Wednesday, May seventeenth, at ten A. M. per personnel.
Next item is the department reports, the budget transfers.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes.
There are no supplemental appropriations. Expenditures, approval of check numbers, two three six zero three three through two three six two four three. For expenditures to the general fund clearing account, totaling five hundred thirty-four thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars, thirty-seven cents.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes.
The treasurer's report?
Move to acknowledge.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lucas Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes. Okay, at this time, we'll recess for salary board meeting. Call the salary board meeting, reconvene. Yes, are any guests concerned in salary board business at this time?
Report of executive sessions, Phil.
There was one executive session held on May ninth, two thousand twenty-three, at two thirty P. M.
Next item is parks and recreation.
I have an alternate motion for that. I would like to make an alternate motion to adjust the rate of twelve lifeguards to thirteen, from, yeah, to thirteen sixty-five per hour, grade A, for Monday through Friday, and fifteen oh six per hour on Saturday and Sundays. And adjust the rate for one lifeguard supervisor, sixteen dollars, two sixty.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we should only do one at a time?
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I would second it.
Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
And you said that was what, fifteen oh?
Fifteen oh six?
Yeah, it's one and a quarter, not one and a half. Okay, yeah. All right, no, yes.
Mr. Lucas Savage?
It's not sufficient to make a difference, no.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes.
All right, the next item is the lifeguard supervisor.
Just, I make an alternate motion to adjust the rate for one lifeguard supervisor, sixteen dollars per hour, grade S. A. For Monday through Friday, and twenty-four dollars per hour on Saturday and Sunday. I make that as a motion.
Could you repeat that, please?
Adjust the rate of one lifeguard supervisor to sixteen dollars an hour, which it currently is grade S. One A. For Monday through Friday, and twenty-four dollars per hour on Saturday and Sunday.
Do we have a second?
I don't know, I'm just thinking about this, if that was even good at the fifteen oh six, because now the...
By Robert's. Yeah, since that can be changed, we can go back and re-discuss that first motion if Rocky, we're in the same session. So if Rocky has some concerns.
Well, like, my concern is, like, we're, we're getting the lifeguard and the supervisor, like, pretty close to the same salary.
My concern is, I'm sorry if you're...
No, no, and, and I mean, I just wanted to make a comment about this before, and if anybody had any, like, questions here, we do want to raise the salaries. I mean, there's a problem that we have, that we can't get lifeguards. And I think, but people don't realize that the training is different for, at a pool than it is at a lake. And a lot of the area pools that I have called are having trouble getting lifeguards also, and they're thinking about putting the rate up. And I think I've said this before, if we don't have lifeguards, we're losing anywhere from three to five thousand dollars a day. And I think that's one of the things, why we want to adjust this. And, and it's not just over that, I think it's a liability that we have. I mean, you have a liability of just swim at your own risk. I mean, that's, that's a great liability to the county. And like I said, I'm not sure now about that fifteen oh six, I thought we were, that was going to be another one, that that was going to be raised. But I think it's pretty close for the regular lifeguard to the supervisor. And I mean, I don't, I'm not so sure about that fifteen oh six now.
Well, I certainly believe the lifeguards and the supervisor are well worth it. But to give the supervisor an eight dollar an hour increase, even on just a Saturday and Sunday, and the, the lifeguards themselves, the twelve lifeguards, an hour forty-one, they have a very difficult job. It's not like a swimming, swimming pool in the municipalities where you can see the bottom. I'm more concerned about the repercussions. We already have an issue with salaries and disparity in a lot of the positions. And my other question would be, is it in the budget? And that's the question you always ask the other row officers and people that come for a raise, is it in the budget?
Well, in regards to being in the budget or the ability to create a return on investment, over the entire season, the motions that are actually on the agenda would cost the county eight thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty cents, about two hundred and eighty-two dollars a day for those weekends. That would result in anywhere from, let's see, the actual data would be, my gosh, anywhere the potential revenue of three thousand, just go by the minimum, three thousand dollars a day, times those thirty weekend days, significant return on investment. So it's well worth the investment. The repercussion in regards to, let's say, disenfranchising current employees, I'd be more than willing to make a motion that would allow any county employee who is certified to hold a second seasonal position and work on Saturdays and Sundays, and earn either the twenty forty-eight per hour that is proposed, or the twenty-four. Every individual in this county has an opportunity to apply for those jobs, to include county employees. And if we have to modify a personnel policy to do so, to give them that opportunity, just like they have an opportunity to go to union positions if they're concerned about the benefits union employees have, fifteen dollars and six cents from thirteen sixty-five is not going to motivate an existing lifeguard to work Saturday and Sunday.
And I would disagree that not every county employee would be capable of performing that lifeguard duty as well. And you do have families in life on the weekend, so...
But again, we're not discriminating by saying you can't earn that. We're providing an opportunity for employees to earn twenty, twenty dollars and forty-eight cents an hour, either new or existing, I would see it.
And even, and even like, if you're going back to like, the job descriptions, like, I don't know where you would even, like, the whole, almost like the whole state is having trouble with life.
Oh, it's significant.
And how do you actually even gauge a job description for this? I mean, I think this is something, this to me is a temporary fix, and I think the way it started out was we wanted to get lifeguards here and give them an incentive for the weekend. So if we're going to give them more of an incentive during the week, are they even going to show up on the weekends? You know, it's, I don't know. That, that's where, where I'm going at.
Can, can I ask for clarification, please? On the lifeguard supervisor. I heard their, their current rate is sixteen dollars an hour, Monday through Friday. And on Saturdays and Sundays, I heard twenty-four dollars per hour. That is, that's not an alternate motion, that's exactly what's on the agenda.
Exactly, exactly, that is it.
I'm sorry, it was, you know, the wrong one.
Yeah, I think twenty is what he had on his, yeah.
If I corrected this.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think we have a motion on the floor, just on that one, and then we could return to the first one if you want to.
Well, further discussion on that, the plan for the lifeguard supervisor is he or she, it's currently, he is already currently scheduled to work Saturdays and Sundays. Right, that, that is part of, of the details that the park director has provided for that particular individual. Obviously, those are the high, high usage days. So I, I can't see the logic of going from sixteen to twenty for that individual, yet going a, going more or less a buck and a half for, for the lifeguards. There's an inequality there, I, I don't see the logic of that. I could see a logic if you, you put up the supervisor about the, the same amount. But taking him up four dollars, and it, it just doesn't...
We've been doing the same thing, going from the original proposal of thirteen sixty-five to twenty, which was about six, seven dollars an hour, and lifeguard or the supervisor, eight dollars.
But that was equal, we were taking them both up, what would be the equivalent of time and a half, right? Quarter, right, yeah.
So we do have a motion on the floor for what is exactly on the agenda, do we have a second?
I would like to amend that to twenty in the proposal, especially since the, the other one passed.
Is it still open for discussion?
Well, do we need a second for that amendment, though?
I have a second, and a modification, sure.
I, I was concerned about, I think the same as you gentlemen, two things, liability exposure to the county, which could be obviously huge, and then weighing the financial commitment to attract and retain lifeguards. And I, I think I would agree with Commissioner Lucas Savage, if we were less fair with lifeguards, we may not attract and retain lifeguards, but yet we're looking to do fifty percent increase on the supervisors, now it's going to be amended. So I, I'm not sure what level would be enough to do that, maybe you gentlemen have more knowledge than I do.
Yeah, and, and what my question was even, like, when we were talking about this for the last couple of weeks, I think we had a discussion. I think it has to do with, like, the rotation also. You know, if you put somebody in rotation and they're working so many hours during the week, do they want to work on the weekends? You know, you have to have a rotation, and not every, you know, not the same four people are working Saturday and Sunday, you know what I mean? That's something that got to be watched, too. So I, I, I mean, I'm thinking, like, starting off that this is a good step, and if, if it comes to whatever we'd have in the next week or two, I don't see any reason why we couldn't amend this then. You know what I mean, to a higher rate, maybe we might even look at that, the supervisor might need more, and, you know what I mean? But we got to start somewhere. And I think once you get it in a rotation, and I, I, even with the, the park, the director, I said to him, you have to be fair to everybody and make sure that the same person does not get the overtime on Saturday and Sunday. Because that way, you're going to lose lifeguards, you have to put, if you have four of them, then the next weekend, the other four have the option. Now, they could, they know, say, I don't want to work it, then you go back on the rotation. But I think, I don't know if we're getting too far ahead of ourselves by just adjusting what, what we have here now. You know what I mean? And like I said, in two weeks from now, we could amend this again. You know, see how it works, put it in, take it easy. And I think we did have some thought in it to have it at that rate, and we might have another thought in two weeks from now.
I, I remind the public specifically that last year, out of the hundred and twenty, hundred and one days of summer, twenty-nine days, we could not, uh, uh, charge. And again, just multiply that out, times three thousand. So you're looking anywhere really between being able to fill those spots, and we're looking at five lifeguards on duty, right? Four lifeguards and one supervisor, that's optimal, because you can open up all three sections of the beach. When we don't have five, and again, this is in this new year with this new structure that's out there with the lifeguard supervisor, talk about risk. So now, instead of having a thousand people in three swimming areas, you might have them in two swimming areas, or even one swimming areas. Talk about a, a challenging environment for a lifeguard to include the, the challenge of not being able to actually see to the bottom. Now you have the potential of anywhere from zero to eight hundred people into one small swimming section versus dispersed over three, if you're not going to be able to incentivize these individuals to work on the days that are currently, if, if at best have minimal coverage, which is two lifeguards, one in the chair, one in the lifeguard station. In regards to two or three weeks from now, readdressing it, that is not going to provide us the opportunity to get new men, women, boys and girls certified and into our system. It takes us weeks to onboard a new person. The fact is also, during the, the summer months, you see a dearth, a lack of certification, recertification courses. So if you don't get those young men and women, boys and girls now, you're not getting them. Because they're at Lehigh, and they're at Palmerton, they're at Weatherly. You're not going to incentivize them to change mid-course. And even if they would do that, we'd, we'd rob from Peter, be it Lehigh and Palmerton or Weatherly, right? Doing a disservice to our other communities, we have to onboard them. And we know as a minimum that's going to take two weeks, and more than likely, it's going to take three or four weeks, even if that individual was certified, you know? So again, I, I think we're, again, sometimes you got to go ahead and reach out there. We can always readjust and lower the salary, just as easily as we can raise it. I would rather start high and lower it versus going low and trying to raise it and not being able to fill our, our chairs out there.
One quick question, of those twenty-nine days?
Yeah.
How many were weather-related closures that the lifeguards were not on duty?
None of those twenty-nine days were weather closures. Twelve of them occurred on weekends, but that, there was not a full weather closure day of those twenty-nine days where we did. Those were swim-at-your-own-risk, not weather closures.
And where do we stand at staffing now on lifeguards?
Yeah.
I think I would talk to a guest today, I think he had one recommendation sent down, and he has two more that are inquiring, or that he's looking at right now, as last I heard.
Yeah, I think it was seven possible, I didn't, I printed it out, I didn't pull it off my computer.
I think there's seven possible.
Yeah.
But I don't, some of them might be coming in, I think by the, was it the thirteenth or something like that?
Yeah, there's one coming in fifteen June, because she's coming from out of state into some...
Is that to fill the four positions?
No, they have four positions, well, they have three chairs and one in the guards, or in the, the first day.
Station, yeah.
So they technically need eight in a day, and there's seven. So it's going to, it's going to be giving overtime to somebody during, you know what I mean? If there's only seven, you need eight for the, the rotation.
And are some returnees?
Um, yeah, there's a couple, there are, yeah, yeah.
Yep. Well, the other thought I had as well is, maybe one and a quarter percent increase now, you know, percent, but the time and a quarter. Come August, when the kids go back to school, then maybe it really is feasible to increase it to that time and a half. It gives more incentives of, if the kids are in a local college, you know, the incentive to come back. That's when we really start, where we are running into the problem with lifeguards, is in August, September, or to Labor Day weekend because of kids returning to school.
I, I don't, if I could go back to the first motion, the thirteen sixty-five to fifteen oh six, is, is that it? Can someone confirm that's a one and a quarter versus something other than that? Yeah, I just checked.
And I didn't have a scale for the supervisor, so that... And I didn't have a scale for the supervisor, so that.
Oh, right, I see, yeah, yeah, kinda gotta. Cause it should be right around three dollars and something additional, should be in the, almost the seventeen dollar range for, right?
Yeah, I come up with seventeen oh six.
Yeah, seventeen oh six, yeah, that would be, if we went one and a quarter, that'd be seven, seventeen oh six. And then like y- your, um, other motion would be taking it to twenty dollars for the supervisor.
So we do have that, that motion to amend, uh, open yet.
Five twelve in the first motion?
Yeah, it was a little, a little less than, than what you really want, should have been seven. Well, seventeen oh six, where's that with our scales, Lisa, do you have that?
I don't have.
Okay, what's closest to seventeen oh six?
And they are a two.
Yes.
Closer to a J step.
Two J?
J is seventeen oh five.
Oh, that's right there. And then the, the twenty dollars an hour would be closest to, again, the supervisor, one.
That is closest to a. A J is nineteen ninety-eight.
One J nineteen ninety-eight. Two J.
If I wasn't, not mistaken, that other rate would have been, uh, right at the end of the scale. At the or over the end, if I recall.
Yeah. So. Yeah. If we could go ahead, Bob, and, and maybe reconsider, and I, I'd make a motion, once we clean this one up. Let's, alright, let's clean this one up, so, but I wanna, what do we need to, we need the, the modification?
Motion to a- amend, the, uh, rate for one lifeguard supervisor. Sixteen dollars per hour, grade S one A for Monday through Friday. And twenty dollars per hour for Saturday and Sunday.
Right, and what we really wanna do though, is modify it to the S one J, which is nineteen ninety-eight, because that's on our scale.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
So if, if Commissioner Notsi makes that modification to his. Motion, then I would go ahead and second that to nineteen ninety-eight, and then would ask us to reconsider the vote.
So much for a short meeting.
So we have a motion?
To modify the salary, uh, to the S one J at nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah.
In a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, I'm going to poll the board, Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
I guess, yes.
Now I'll make a motion to reconsider, uh, the first one, uh, first the move to reconsider, then I'll make a motion to.
I'll second that, okay.
Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luka Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Notsi?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, so then, I guess, I, I'll go ahead and move to, to adjust to a, to a two J seventeen oh five.
I'll second that. Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luka Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Notsi?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna recess the meeting for another week, for another, another thought. Okay, and now, move that we go back into our commissioner.
Okay, next item, is the personnel report for county departments.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luka Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Notsi?
Yes.
The acknowledgements for courts and row offices.
Move to acknowledge.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luka Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Notsi? There's no correspondence received. Advertising, authorize the advertisement of the request for proposals. For cleaning services at the Children and Youth Services Office, five twenty-five Iron Street, Lehigh, Pennsylvania.
Motion approved, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luka Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Notsi?
Yes.
Courts for approval and execution, a three-year renewal agreement with Pantella Data. For six cable modems located in the courthouse, and two cable modems located at the correctional facility. At the monthly recurring cost of eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty seven, sixty cents, excuse me.
Move to approve and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luka Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Notsi? Information technology for approval and execution, a quote received from Amazon Web Services. For Amazon Simple Storage Service monthly subscription, at a cost of three hundred and seventy-six dollars eighty-four cents. For a total of four thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars and eight cents per year.
Move to approve and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luka Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Notsi?
Yes.
Integra, a quote received from Integra One of Allentown, Pennsylvania. To purchase a multi-factor authentication system, tokens fifty at a cost of six thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars and four cents. A one-year server, two thousand forty-four dollars eighty-seven cents. An Integra One Professional Services at a cost of three thousand eight hundred dollars. For a total of twelve thousand three hundred and forty dollars ninety-one cents. This is the Co-Stars Contract Hardware, three dash E twenty-two dash five eighty. And software number six dash E twenty-three two fifty-two.
Move to approve and execute, I'd ask for discussion then.
Second.
A, a clarification, Bob, you recall that contract, is there a recurring annual fee, uh, on this particular contract? That, and the only reason I bring it up, you know, I hate to tell P Corp, but. Uh, folks are actually now, no surprise, moving away from multi-factor authentication to passkey technology. Uh, which eliminates the need for that, and I just don't wanna be locked into something extremely long. And a year from now, P Corp comes and says, well, guess what, you know, multi-factor, you really don't need that, however, passkey technology. Uh, is actually better. You know, worst case, cause I don't, go ahead, I'm sorry. Maybe we could check with Caleb and Brandon, just ask them to review it, just table it for one week. Again, I, I just saw, you know, everyone is moving to passkey now, and it eliminates the need for multi-factor authentication, it's actually much better. Uh, it, so, maybe just one week, I'll mo- ma- move them.
It's, as long as it's not reoccurring or a long-term effect, we'd have to be annually renewed, we'd be okay, but we'll have to review, so I agree.
Yeah. Yeah, cause sometimes it goes down.
Clarify the term.
Yeah, we'll just clarify the term, ensure, uh, we have it out, should we need to.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's something to consider, but yeah, I, I don't see the recurring.
Yeah, let's say, I'll move just, again, just for one week, just to talk to Caleb and Brandon for their advice and counsel.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luka Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Notsi?
Yes.
Next item, Mulchunk Lake Park, a service agreement for ratification. A service agreement with Rentokill North America doing business as Airlick. To provide conventional service to four cabins at the Mulchunk Lake Park at a cost of eighteen hundred dollars.
Move to ratify.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luka Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Notsi?
Yes.
Farmland preservation for approval, proposal submitted by Ralph W. Clay. Professional land surveyors of Jim Thorpe, Pennsylvania, for survey services at Kenneth R. Bond Farm. Of Jim Thorpe, Pennsylvania, total cost, estimate cost not to exceed nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Move to approve, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luka Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Notsi?
Yes.
Solicitor's report?
Thank you, for the courthouse roof, uh, seeking a motion for approval and execution of change order number six. To increase the original contract with Boyle Construction Incorporated of Allentown, Pennsylvania. For repairs to the courthouse roof by Garinger Corporation of Whitehall, Pennsylvania, at a cost of ten thousand sixty-six dollars. For a new contract total of eight hundred fifty thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars. The proposal was previously accepted on May fourth, twenty twenty-three, at agenda item number twenty-three dash two zero seven.
Move to approve and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luka Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Notsi?
Yes.
At the Hoven, uh, parking lot, uh, seeking a motion for approval and execution of a special activities agreement. With the, uh, Jim Thorpe Tourism Agency, uh, for use of the, the parking lot, uh, and the gazebo. Uh, for food vending, utilizing the parking lot, May twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-three, and the gazebo, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. And this would be contingent on receiving a valid insurance certificate.
Move to approve and execute, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luka Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Notsi?
Yes.
Uh, for Josiah White Park, uh, seeking a motion for approval and execution of a special activities agreement for the use of Josiah White Park. Along with the gazebo by New England Valley Mennonite Church of Tamacqua, Pennsylvania. For a street meeting, uh, involving acapella singing and Bible teaching, uh, that would be June twenty-fourth, July twenty-third, and September twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-three.
Motion approved and execute, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luka Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Notsi?
Yes.
And the first of two resolutions, uh, seeking a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-three dash zero one seven. Uh, recognizing the one hundred fiftieth anniversary of Trinity Evangelical Lutheran Church of Lehigh, Pennsylvania.
Move to adopt, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luka Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Notsi?
Yes.
And likewise, uh, seeking a motion to adopt resolution, uh, number twenty-three dash zero one eight. Uh, recognizing the one hundred fiftieth anniversary of Zion Church of Christ of Lehigh, Pennsylvania.
Move to adopt, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luka Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Notsi?
Yes.
And, uh, lastly, for tax claim, uh, seeking a motion for approval of a request, uh. To, uh, relieve Banks Township from current and delinquent county taxes for the year twenty twenty-two. Totaling nine hundred dollars sixty-one cents for parcels number one thirty dash four dash A eight point fifteen. And one thirty A dash four dash B five.
Move to approve, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Luka Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Notsi?
Yes.
That's it for this solicitor.
Any further business? Ring none, commissioners' reports, Mr. Arn.
Uh, the only one, thing I wanna say is, uh, our, our election department did a great, outstanding job. Uh, I mean, from the director all the way down to the poll workers, um, there's always complaints here and there. And I did have some phone calls about that, I think one of the things, uh, the results were not posted at the polls. But in my research, trying to find the numbers, uh, I, I was interested in other races in other counties. And ours was a little bit unique, like I, I went through the steps and went through the state and tried to find it. And right there it was on our website, you know, and not any, not a lot of them did that, you know? If you went to, you know, Luzern or wherever it was, you had to go through the whole thing to find it. You know, and, and I think that made it easier, I'm sure there weren't people happy because they wanted to know within the first hour. Uh, but I think within the first hour, they were posting, and then, and hourly it was going up, and I think it, I think it ran great. I mean, for having new people, you know, a new director and, and a lot of new people in the department, I, I don't think it could have went any better. So I have to commend them on, on what they did, I mean, sometimes we get a new group in, it's a little scary, is it gonna go right? And, uh, they proved us right, that we made the right decision to get the people there, so I wanna commend them on that.
Mr. Luka Savage?
Yeah, a couple of things on the election, and really reiterating, reemphasizing some of the things that Commissioner Arnner stated. You know, I, I would highlight the fact that both the director and new director were both hired within, uh. The director and assistant director hired within sixty-three days of this election. And to see it play out as well as it did is a testament to their work, and I, I also have to give great credit to Jane. Uh, down there, who's been there to help both of them through this transition, but I am gonna read some names of some folks who really helped out. And were critical to making it, uh, run as smoothly as it did. Uh, obviously, the seasonal workers, Stacy, Emily and Gianna, uh, Kevin from the controller's office. Falling under the Board of Commissioners, uh, Authority Responsibility, Dawn, Mariah, Julie, Angelia. We had our maintenance from Parks and the county main maintenance folks helping out, Roy and Suzie, the two rovers. Brandon and Caleb from IT, I'll mention Megan from Dominion, who was great, and obviously, the, the poll workers, just an incredible job. Given, you know, the changes that have taken, uh, place there. Uh, Friday, nine o'clock, we'll go ahead and, and start, uh, the canvassing. An update, uh, from Jen, the director, she indicated that to this point, in regards to the seemingly thousands. And again, this is hyperbole, thousands of write-ins, and that may end up being true. They're through ten of the sixty-two polling places when it comes to, you know, doing an, an initial cursory look at, at, at the write-ins. Where we stand there, obviously, a lot of uncontested races. Uh, for the public or for those races that were uncontested, or there's a lot of write-ins, keep in mind, we have twenty days to certify the results. And so the standard answer, if someone calls, when will you be done, well, twenty days from when we start the actual canvassing. Uh, I think it was on Friday night, when I last checked, they only had about sixteen provisionals, so. Provisionals should go pretty quick once they start, uh, uh, reviewing them, that's all I have.
Mr. Notsi?
Yes, uh, continue on the elections, thank you very much, everyone involved for keeping us out of the headlines.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
That is the biggest thing, biggest worry, and, uh, I think they did a great job. Lot of tedious work, as, uh, Commissioner Luka Savage, uh, alluded to, with all the write-ins and everything. They kept, uh, complaints about write-in, so, that there is not spaces, enough space in the box, especially with those felt tipped things.
Yeah.
And I don't know if you could use a smaller one for that, or not.
I asked her.
The biggest complaint I had got, uh, sitting at a poll the other day.
Yeah, yeah, we talked to Jen about going to the, the fine or medium fine, because those are like almost bingo blotters. You know, is the ones we use, you know, so, like, I think that's a good idea, to look at the finer ones. In the cars for sale. Yeah, right, you just have the big smear when you do a write-in there.
Hopefully, that way it's harder to fill in the holes.
Yeah, yeah.
Can't win either way. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to mention, I guess, anyway, an extremely busy day with this dry weather conditions, the wind and everything. Uh, out of the twenty-three departments, I think there were only three or four that were not dispatched to a call, a lot of them were out of county. Some, like, I know of one department, and, uh, and two or three of them went from one call to the other, four calls in a row. Started after ten in the morning, from structure fires, brush fire, structure, uh, another dwelling fire, and then another dwelling fire. So they were extremely busy, uh, busy yesterday, and as of, uh, I know when I went past our station last night, they were still washing those and everything. At eight-thirty in the evening, they were still cleaning up from, yeah, all the calls that just went out together. The sad part yesterday was one of those days where a lot of the departments were low on manpower. It doesn't always happen like that, but it just seemed like every department was short of manpower, had trouble getting the equipment out. And they had a driver, they didn't have the personnel for the size of the calls. Muchoy, and I know, you know, one department, frankly, was at one call and got requested by, uh, Monroe County. And they couldn't even leave because, uh, they were still busy at the first, but soon as they got free, uh, they were only in Monroe County. So it's an extremely busy time, extremely dry out there, and I would caution anyone, uh, don't burn. And another big problem, and a possibility of a, uh, an incident that happened in Monroe, uh, cigarette butt and mulch. People like to throw their butts in the mulch, it's hard to charge, and well, I'm not saying it's a sad sign, but we did, do get called out quite a bit. For, uh, little fires, you know, something you could put out with a bug, and a lot of times, uh, people throwing their cigarettes. And remind people that cigarette butts are littering, you know, uh, and I, you know, driving, uh, go, yeah, driving. Being chauffeured to a meeting. I just can't believe, after having this cleanup here recently, on Earth Day, and the amount of trash. Between Lehigh and Escamoni, bottles there, laying at Packard, and at the, the curb near the top of the hill there. I see again, and it looks like there was fluids in the bottles, like a half a case of beer or whatever it was, uh, uh, of that color. It's just pathetic, the lack of respect that people have for our environment anymore, it's just outrageous. That's all I have, meeting adjourned. That's all I have, meeting adjourned. Okay, James? Don't worry, we'll keep it short.
Amy, you're not having a time for any of the asked questions, okay? No, you have this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll call the monthly meeting at retirement order to order.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first, I'll seek the motion for the approval of the minutes for the previous meeting held April twentieth of twenty twenty-three.
Motion approved, second.
Mr. Zlinka?
Yes.
Mr. Sverchak, all abstained since I was absent, Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasiewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocci?
I was absent as well.
Thank you, are there any guests concerning retirement board business? Report of executive sessions, there weren't any held. Uh, next will be to ratify the warrant, that'll be check checks number four zero nine zero two to four zero nine one nine and direct deposit seven zero two one five five seven to seven zero two one nine six three for the month of April.
Motion to ratify, second.
Mr. Zlinka?
Yes.
Mr. Sverchak, yes, Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasiewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocci?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next will be the review of the retirement activity for the month of April. We had seven retirement refunds, uh three superannuation retirements. And I always like to mention about the employees of service to the county. Those three folks had a combined service of fifty-five years to the county, so I want to thank them for their service and wish them well. And then there was one retiree that passed, uh Shirley 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 Ann Mundero. I want to express on behalf of the retirement board our sympathy to her family, she served at Weatherwood for eighteen years. Uh, we also had the uh dispersments for the month of April, the monthly benefits of four hundred seventy-four thousand three hundred nine dollars and twenty-eight cents, option four, seven thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars and twenty-three cents, and refunds of seventeen thousand eighty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents for a total disbursement of four hundred ninety-eight thousand six hundred seventy-two thousand and thirty-seven cents, leaving the portfolio value as of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three of eighty-three million six hundred forty-two thousand seventy dollars and seventy-seven cents. And then the most recent update as of this past Friday was eighty-three million seventy thousand dollars and three hundred seventy thousand three hundred seventy-eight. Okay, any questions on that? Uh, correspondence, I did not receive any, uh solicitor's report?
No, report.
Thank you. Investment managers' report, uh Mrs. Wilson of Marquette would have been here today, but she's on vacation. Uh, so we're gonna look to have her scheduled in June to review the first quarter. Uh, anything on a new business? Anything under old business?
Well, the further business, uh, need a motion to change it to date?
Well, further business, I was gonna make the motion to move the retirement meeting from the third Thursday of June fifteenth to the second Thursday of June eighth, twenty twenty-three, and I could open it for discussion if anyone has any questions. All right, thank you.
I will not be available that day as well now, so, and I think, do you have a, does somebody have a conference or something that Sarah?
Well, well, the reason why we're moving it is because the third Thursday, the Treasurer's Alinka and Sarah Wilson will be at the Treasurer's Conference. So that's why we're moving it, the fourth Thursday, I would not be available either, so. All right, Mr. Zlinka?
Yes.
Mr. Sverchak, yes, Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasiewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nocci?
Yes.
Thank you, and next, that's it, all I have. That's it, thank you.
Meeting adjourned, okay, now James, sorry about that.
Um, yeah, clarify with those changes in the rate for the lifeguards.
The, yeah, the lifeguards are gonna go to seventeen oh five from thirteen sixty-five, and then the uh, that's only on weekends.
What about weekdays, Monday through Friday?
Weekdays will remain at thirteen sixty-five. And the supervisors will go from sixteen, it'll be remain the same Monday through Friday, and will go to nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah, keep in mind that we already have a current policy where on holidays, they actually get time and a half, which aligns with others.
That that's all I have.
Sir Fu?
Um, well, just, you guys might very much, but the opening date for Mochon Lake?
Memorial Day is Saturday. I mean, camping's already open. It's Memorial Day, Saturday.
Okay, um, and then, do you guys have like an estimate of how much the, how much you guys make each year from Mochon Lake?
Yeah, it's on our budget, if you look at our budget forecast online, it has last year, i- it has last year, so the revenue's in the budget uh from admissions, yeah.
And is this a big part of the budget each year?
Um, no, not really, no, I mean, it's maintenance and daily operations uh that.
I think it's very, I mean, it it's a lot, but it's like a smidgen of our budget, it's not.
I mean, these are seasonal employees, you're down to a handful of staff, you know, the majority of the year. I mean, this is just bringing in the seasonals, you know?
Yeah, I don't recall offhand between the revenues for camping and swimming and the salaries is really not a whole lot of expense out of the uh, and because of grants, uh, it's. Yeah, I may see what I thought, I forgot what, a hundred some thousand dollars.
There's a hundred eighty thousand.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
I don't know if it's a hundred eighty thousand or something, I think it was like that.
Revenue from, if I recall correctly, remember, we take hotel tax and parking revenue. That accounts for about fi- uh fifty per percent of the operating budget. Uh, the other significant portion, which if I recall, is about twenty-two percent from last year, is camping revenue. Camping revenue i- is a really big intake, and then the other twenty-five percent would be, you know, from swimming, beach access.
So many expenses this year, the other, the major one, or I shouldn't say major, but the paving, which was a grant, and a little bit of that will probably take, uh, that wasn't covered under there, there might be a little bit that should be covered under the uh parking fund where we do all the paving out of, so we uh should be able to get that, while looking for that number.
Yeah, it's not, it's right here, you'll be able to see it afterwards, just come up, the budget is right here.
Okay, uh, my last question is, how many like confirmed lifeguards do you have right now?
Not positive, I think any of us are positive.
I I really think it's probably three or four right now, because again, there are some people who were taking their certification this past weekend, or recertifications, so I I would say we're probably at three or four. If I give Dave a call, three two five.
Two paving, or pending.
Yeah, three two five, three six six nine.
Exactly, call Dave, he can give you those exact numbers.
Yeah.
Now, I mean, welcome back. I thought you left.
James, James.
Um, I just wish to know, son, you talked about with about the the burning, um, the issue with brush fires. Has the county decided on if they should do a county-wide burn burn ban for now?
No, we have not, uh, to me, it's kind of late in the season, because if you put that on, it's uh thirty days, they have to keep it on. Uh, the other thing is that uh we do not have, fifty percent of the fire departments not have not requested that.
So that's.
That's usually what we base it on with the majority of the uh fire departments request a burn ban, then we don't.
Okay, and then may I have copies of the Zion and Trinity revolutions? That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, we know, thank you.
Look at kind of, we don't want to get you involved.